All right, it's Tuesday, September 6th, 6:00 PM. We'll call to order the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission meeting. We will have Ms. Johnston do the invocation and Ms. Graham do the pledge. Please stand.
Mr. President, Father God, we thank you so much for the opportunity to come together and to make decisions for the betterment of Mount Pleasant and its citizens. Please be with us as we make those decisions and help us to ask smart questions and really think why, be wise about the decisions that we make. Thank you so much for loving us and for seeing me in your name, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We have Mr. Irvin out tonight, the rest of the commission is here. We don't have a line item for approving the agenda tonight, but we need to approve the agenda tonight with one change. True Rail has asked to defer per their request, so that will not be on the agenda tonight. Can we get a motion for agenda approval?
Motion we approve changing the agenda to remove True Rail.
Second.
On a favor? Motion carries. Approval correction amendments from prior meetings.
I make a motion we approved amendments from our August 13th meeting.
I'll second that.
On a favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, completion review of unfinished business, there is none. Number six, any special report from city departments or committees?
None.
We'll turn it over to new business for you, Director Brooks.
Advocate CBC Properties LLC, on behalf of owners Susan Elizabeth Morgan, Patricia Pullen, Emily Morgan Robertson, Robert Holloway, John E. Kane III, are requesting a rezoning of property on North Main Street from CH Highway Commercial to IL Light Industrial. Others identified on tax map 127 parcel 14.06 and legally recorded in deed book R2308, page 1497 at the Murray County Register of Deeds. Reasons for request of rezoning is for appropriate use. And we have a representative for the applicant in the audience.
Does staff have a recommendation on this?
There is.
Good evening, evening, my name is Michael Warren, I'll be representing Mr. Robinette. I'm residing at 8281 Mount Joy Road, Mount Pleasant. I hope that I can answer any questions if I have.
I don't know that I have any, I mean, we don't have any issues through staff, right? As far as we know?
Will had an excellent staff report that is in your packet. You've also have the four questions that I know four would like for us to weigh in on.
And just as housekeeping, this time we went ahead and drafted a resolution. And also we have the rezoned worksheets that has each of these items that are on the card that you normally get, and it has explanation for each one. So when y'all do start deliberating, I would like for y'all as a group to fill that out and evaluate that. But as you said, the staff report is also included as an exhibit to whatever resolution you want to pass. And Will can probably go over the staff report if y'all would rather do it out loud.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, we can. I will.
Thanks everybody. We consider the comprehensive plan that covers all Murray County, including Mount Pleasant. It will be land uses around the subject property and then reflected back against the criteria that's listed in zoning documents for you when you consider a rezoning request. And that's what's highlighted in the staff report. So there's a few things that I would just point out here. The Murray County Comprehensive Plan, which is almost 20 years old now, does identify this area as the Airport District, which does include opportunities for additional industrial development, which would support the IL light industrial request. However, there are also existing residential and commercial development around this tract that should be considered too. So when we start looking at these four questions, things that you should be aware of and honestly should just debate for yourselves, is will there be any adverse effect upon adjoining property owners or residents of those properties? And another thing to consider with any rezoning is the assumption should be that the current zoning is correct. Now, it's typically up to the applicant or some other interested party to justify why the rezoning should, why the zoning should be changed. And hopefully the applicant's representative can highlight that for us. But with the information included in that application, the assumption is that they're wanting to develop the property in a way that's supported by the IL zone. So maybe a little bit more information on why that could be considered appropriate could be helpful as you consider this recommendation. So things we want to make sure that it's not just to the benefit of the current or future owners of this property or the applicants, and that there will not be detrimental or negative impacts on adjoining property owners or the community at large. So we tried to highlight things to consider for each of those. And we're happy to answer any questions that anyone has about those criteria. And again, this is not the final decision for this request, you're making a recommendation to the City Commission, which we'll have to consider for several reasons.
Thank you, Will.
I have a question. It looks like there's only one access area for vehicles.
Road in. No, there is two.
There's two?
Yes.
So where's the one that's not on Main Street?
They are both on Main Street. One is between, I'm not sure what the name of the business is now, but it was Boselman Automotive at one time, between Hit and Cash Express. And the other entrance is between a duplex and some other rental property on, toward the south, towards town.
Do we know what the plan is?
Our plan is to relocate Robinette Trucking to that area.
And y'all already own the lot that, because we only show on our little map one coming out. The other one's somewhere down here, right?
Yes, yes, well, it's really just road frontage, it ain't really a drive or anything, no.
Right, and all that had to come out of site plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we get to that point.
Yep.
It's got the railroad behind it, so. I don't have any real big issues with it, I mean, it's a good use of the property, I would think. But it's not being used at all right now.
It's a giant hate field drive.
Can you tell them?
There's nobody signed up to speak against it.
Can you tell them why this property is, should be zoned IL instead of commercials?
No, I am unfamiliar with the reasoning behind the zone.
It's kind of a landlocked piece of property.
It does not have a lot of road structure.
I guess my only concern would be if it's going to be a trucking company, that means a lot of in and outs on a two-lane road.
Which we are located approximately, I'd say one and one-half miles to the north.
Okay.
Presently.
The same operation.
Yes.
Those questions are again, like something that would go into the site plan. Right now, we need to talk about whether this property should be zoned light industrial instead of highway commercial like it is right now. So I guess if he doesn't have reasons, y'all should go through that worksheet and kind of talk about each one of those items and say your reasons for or against each one.
All right. So the first question would be, the amendment is or is not in agreement with the land use plan for the area because?
I mean, I think it is and is.
I think the property could probably be either way, because there's commercial and light industrial all in the same area. And pretty fully, the area is mainly industrial anyway. That would be my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I think we're good then.
Next question, there will, will not be an adverse effect upon adjoining property owners because?
Anybody sign up to speak?
Nobody signed up to speak, Mr. Vick signed up to speak, but I figure I know what he's here to speak on.
Not on this.
Chairman?
Yes.
I've received no calls for or against. Sign was posted, letters were mailed, so.
So everybody had proper notice?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, except for the railroad guy, probably the largest property owner that adjoins it.
Okay. So evidently, nobody else has a problem with it being an adverse effect, the community doesn't. There is, is not a property owner or a small group of property owners who will benefit material from the change to the detriment of the general public.
I don't see that.
I don't see it being a detriment to the general public. The following conditions affecting the area have, have not changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning map. So I think it could have gone either way, if somebody wanted to put a hotel on it, that might have been okay, but this is, somebody wants to put an industrial facility on it? I don't see why not.
It's the fourth vote called.
It's supported both causes, it's.
I agree.
We'll take a motion on whether we approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve this zoning change.
I'll second that motion.
All these reasons we've been stuck about.
All in favor? Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for filling out the worksheet.
You are so proud of us.
I've got one, I'll give it to you.
Okay. B, owner Kimberly Bryant, on behalf of applicant Houston and Hannah Paul, have requested a re-subdivision of two lots located at 429 Cannon Road, being further identified as tax map 127 parcel 009.12 and map 127 parcel 009.03, and duly recorded deed book 12639, excuse me, 2639, page 1389, and on file Murray County Register of Deeds. The property zones zoned R1 low-density residential.
Will, you want to go first and then we can have the applicant speak on it?
Yes.
Will go first?
Probably rather Will go first, we don't know of any issues before they speak.
Right, that's.
Okay, thank you again, this lot, it's really adjusting to property lines. Everything is in pretty good order, but there are a couple lots that we would need to see prior to recording and prior to any building permits being issued, and other related. The last bullet, from the two bullets included in your staff report, there are some certificates on the plaque that need to be corrected to reference Mount Pleasant. And those subdivision regulations, which is a pretty easy correction. And then because sanitary lines need to be contained in this area or serving these lots, we just need to verify that the subject tank is not going to be, the bid and associated build lines won't be compromised by the adjustment in the property lines and that both lots can be served adequately. Just so that there's no complications when they go to bill permits in the future, go to full permits in the future. So hopefully that's something that their surveyor can correct pretty easily, but those could be really good conditions for your approval, and if you feel that's appropriate. Those are the only two issues we have been by the plaque.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Kim Bryant, 429 Cannon Road. We originally had six acres and an acre and a half, my house is on the acre and a half. And my daughter and her husband Houston want to build their house, their forever house on my property, so. Doing the American thing. Giving them their hair, didn't before I did.
Was this something you think that your engineer could clear up pretty easily?
Is there public sewers to be a septic?
They could do septic, but it's too far back, so we're going to go with sewer. I mean, we're going to go with septic.
So.
I'm on sewer.
Yeah, I got you, because you're up.
Yeah.
On the road. So have you had, have y'all had any sewers on this?
Yeah, it's already on here.
Okay, it is.
Yeah, it should be, it's that.
I'd see the proposed house, but.
Right there. He's got this mark.
Oh, okay, okay, got you.
Both of those areas are great.
Okay.
He said he didn't have any issues.
Is that good for you, Will?
If I remember in the latest version of the plaque, it didn't show the sanitary sewer line. It's usually in the right of way. It might be under the property line and correct it wrong. It did show two different soil areas, they didn't identify what those would be used for. So that could be for septic potentially, the apartment roofs.
Yeah.
For the size of house that they want, or if those are good areas for that. It just needs to be detailed on the plaque, so that it will clear on how the lots would be served.
Right, and clear up the Jackson Municipal Regional, Regional Planning Commission that's on there.
Where is that?
It's under the Certificate of Accuracy of Survey, references, not even our city.
Where is it?
It's under the Certificate of Accuracy of Survey, right by his stamp. It's in the notes.
Yeah, right. That's funny, I'm from Jackson, so. Went over here.
Okay, oh yeah.
Yeah, just probably cutting pace something.
Yeah. Okay, so that needs corrected, and then you want him to identify the septic area?
And he needs to show the public sewer if it runs through any of this property too, right, Will? Is that what?
Right, if it's existing in the right of way, you can show where that is. If you want to serve these lots with sewer, that's great, just show how those lots would be served with utilities, where in sewer specifically.
I'll probably have the paperwork with me for the sewer that's flagged, if you need a copy of that, but I think Chris might have, do you have that?
You may have emailed that to me.
Okay.
So.
I may have it if you need it.
Yeah, we'll just have to get the final plaque cleared up before it's really a final plaque.
Before it's recorded.
Before it's recorded.
Secretary Johnson signs, Johnson signs on that, we'll make sure that those conditions have been met.
Yeah, but we can go ahead and approve those.
With those conditions, yeah.
I'm willing to entertain a motion if anybody wants to make a motion.
I always do, if anyone else wants to.
See if they find what I'm referring to here. I make a motion that we approve the re-subdivision of lots for Kimberly Bryant.
Condition, no.
Oh, conditionable, conditionable upon the final plaque, having the sewer, the septic area and these public utilities noted.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Post, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven?
B, applicant owners Allison and Jesse Stags request re-subdivision of combining two lots, the total 0.67 acres identified on tax map 1270B parcel nine and 10, located 602 Brookside Drive, identified as lots 94 and 95 on Sugar Ridge, section two, plaque book P18, page 274, on file at Murray County Register's deed. The property is owned actually R1, I have a typo, it's.
It's recorded correctly on the plaque.
It is correct, that is correct, but. Owned R1 low-density, not R3.
Stags?
So there's like no comment.
Yeah, there's no comment.
That might have all got cleared up the first time.
Yeah.
Jesse Stags, 602 Brookside Drive here at Mount Pleasant, just wanted to put two lots together to build a detached garage on that vacant lot.
Anybody got any questions? Make a motion?
I make a motion, we.
I'll second that motion.
Approve.
All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. D has been deferred. E. Unless we want to do F first.
I will stick with D.
I know.
Gerald Vick with WS Engineering, submitted preliminary plaque, request for South Bend Crossing on 68.82 acres identified on tax map 133 parcel 01.00 and located on the corner of South Cross Bridges Road and Highway 43, for the construction of 232 single-family homes. The property is owned R3 high-density residential. The owner of the property is John King. And the owner and applicant, applicant are present in all of this.
If we could have Will go first again, just where we can kind of go over everything that's written, and we can, then we can address it with the engineering.
Good.
Thank you, as Chris mentioned, preliminary plats, preliminary plats in the development. With preliminary plats, the subdivision regulations, the planning commission were asked for the planning commission's input on a few particular items. So that's what you'll need to consider going forward. With the proposed plan, the applicant has requested that, or proposed to develop sidewalks on one side of the roads throughout the neighborhood, and that's completely within their bounds as an applicant. The subdivision regulations don't require one approach to sidewalks, but they do leave that decision up to the planning commission. So our recommendations from ACI, based on our experience and kind of our project portfolio, is to recommend sidewalks on both sides of the streets. Again, it's up to you for that final decision. And there's also another very neat feature of this development, they're hoping to connect to the existing park, the southwest, I guess, is the direction there, by using a path with mulch trail, path with wide mulch trail. While that route is probably going to be very beneficial to the residents trying to approach that park, we recommend a more durable material and possibly a wider trail with, just to accommodate families with trailers and kids on bicycles and a variety of each of them, I expect, that are trying to approach that park. But I would like to recognize the applicant for having that thought in trying to approach the park as the community has to it in the neighborhood as well. So that's a very good consideration as well. There are a number of open space lots, and I'm going to ask for some clarification on what those would be used for. The primarily appears that they're used for stormwater and maybe some passive open space recreational use. Those will need to be maintained by HOA and prior to construction activity. We need those HOA documents and responsibilities to be submitted, just so we know who's responsible for what in terms of maintenance and in ongoing use. So there's a bullet or two related to those. And then block link, subdivision regulations state that blocks shall not exceed 600 feet, no will be less than 400 feet, except as the planning commission needs necessary. So with this property, we have a logical transitional on the basics, the property, and we've got lots of houses that are good about zoning that don't necessarily make it easy to meet that 400-foot minimum at times. But we've run into this with, I haven't just verified, prior to this development too. So what you'll see is when the lots back up to each other, that kind of butt end of the block is going to be shorter than 400 feet. And then in this instance, they've got stretch that's a little bit longer than 600 feet, because they're trying to move around those utility bowls and the electric placement. And applicants come out as additional reasons for the requested block arrangement. And that's also completely within your purview, because this is a preliminary plaque. Let's see. The other comments have to do with sidewalks and things of that nature, any additional questions? I'd be glad to clarify these comments. But overall, this is a fine zoning ordinance. There is one question about the boundary of the development and the existing zoning boundary that we do need to clean up or clarify. And Chris may be able to indicate some more knowledge on this fact, but it appears that the boundary of the development on the preliminary plaque doesn't exactly line up with our zoning boundary for this piece, if you remember back when it was rezoned. There's some commercial zoning along the road branch. I believe that it was just more of a trade line, this takes more of a job configuration. I'm still a little unclear on whether they think the current commercial zoning follows that line or if that's going to be a future request. But at any rate, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on where the commercial zoning stops and where the zoning starts. So maybe we can add that decision as well.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Good evening, I'm Gerald Vick. For those of you that might not know, I'm Gerald Vick with WS Engineers and Surveyors in Columbia, Tennessee. And I am here also with a property owner, in case you have any questions that Mike can help answer. Y'all, those of you that were here when this rezoning came through, you're familiar with the layout that we present to you tonight. Some of the things that have changed is that there was a multi-family component townhomes that was in the previous, a previous version of this that has, based on people that are interested in this property, they have gone to doing single-family detached in that area as well. Been quite a bit of a, of a unit loss from what you had seen previously. As you saw, or as you heard Chris mention, when we actually presented this to him, it was 232 lots, we're down to 219 now. We feel like everything we've done, we tried to, you know, make something that would be a better product, work with, work with what we have, the land that we have, and not try to fit, go too crazy on this. You know, with regard to the sidewalks, I don't think the code requires sidewalks at all, but, you know, we definitely proposed putting sidewalks, I'm not positive about that.
No, as Will stated, the subregs did not specifically call out that you got to do sidewalks, and so.
It does make for a nicer subdivision.
Right, and we're definitely proposing them on one side of the road. Personally, I think that impervious surfaces is a, is a concern, and sidewalks on both sides of the road eats into that impervious surface number. And, you know, I've always been a proponent to just do it on one side unless, you know, we're forced to do both sides. You know, the, the trail that connects to the city, you know, we had discussed that at rezoning. You know, our plan is to put a little playground area on the city's property there. We felt like, felt like the mulch trail, you know, was, was appropriate because we're also reserving the right of way for the future, if the city wants to extend the road through their property. So, you know, that way you don't tear up sidewalk, you know, or whatever. So, you know, that way you don't tear up sidewalk, you know, or whatever you built there, you know, to do this, it's just the mulch trail at that point.
How long is that proposed trail? Do you have any idea the, the length of it?
Um, I, I don't have a, the, the number right here.
As far as how much you'd have to tear up?
Three, four hundred feet.
Okay, so.
You know, three, four, five hundred feet.
It's really not that long if you had to tear something different up, that's.
You know, we could do, you know, we could do something, we could do a paved path or something if, if that would be, you know, a, 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 really a, a hard point that, that y'all feel like we need to do a little more there. The last thing I wanted to specifically bring up, and I show it on the plat that you have, there's a bold dashed line and particularly on the remainder track three A. And you'll see that line diverges from the proposed property line. And the reason that is, is that the, um, property owner has a, um, potential interested tenant to buy that property and they need that piece. I had made him aware that they would have to come back and rezone that piece as back to CH in order to make it work, but it's clearly defined the little wedge piece triangle. That's your point too, right, I guess. So there is a piece there that would be, um, R3, that would need to be rezoned in order to make that client work with the land area that they need for their product. So y'all may have heard, but whatever.
Yeah, I thought this was pretty close to what we talked about whenever we rezoned it, just on, on first.
It is, and, and, you know, the, the block length, he's correct, you know, with the smaller lots, the block length doesn't really work out based on the way the criteria is, and this is pretty much these, these blocks are exactly like what we had shown you before. The difference is the road that came up across the power lines hasn't changed any length or anything, what we showed before, we just changed what the product was going to be on that road.
Philip, do we have any safety concerns with the longer block length, uh, from a services standpoint?
You cut me, you make like in the fire department. Um, I'll look up, no, I've actually been looking at it for a couple of years, right? So I'll look up, no, um, as far as the construction documents, uh, fire protection and all that stuff, display all that, so.
We do have, we do have the, the parking area with the, with the mail kiosk there, about mid-block on that long section, so.
You've got two, right? You've got one over and here.
Right, we've got two, two proposed areas, but one up there actually has a, has a place where if a fire truck needed to turn around, you know, you'd have a, a hammerhead type turnaround area there, so.
Got you.
But that's mid-block, so.
As far as the two entrances, they did, uh, come back on the commercial, it probably through design, try to make those off the two entrances, so we don't have so many coming off that road like you see in other, um, developments, but those two entrances would be adequate. It's just for the commercial part, making sure we're utilizing those, so we don't have so many different entrances in a tight space there. But that was, go back to engineering, we actually didn't get to that part, but.
And there, there is, they do have access to those, to, to those, um, the proposed roads from those lots.
Any questions for Gerald or the? The owner? I am? John? Senator? I, I think as a general rule, I'd like to see something besides mulch on that, that trail, just for long-term maintenance. I mean, if it was a thousand feet or something, or two thousand feet, three hundred feet. I don't know about the, a wider trail would be better. Don't know that it's a deal breaker for me, but five feet's not real wide if you're coming and going.
Right.
But other than that, that's.
So are you, do we need to put those as?
That's, that's just my, that's just my opinion.
We can address that, uh, construction plan, which you'll, which you'll be seeing following these.
Gotcha.
You know, the, I'd like to see sidewalks on both sides, but I understand it's not, it just makes a prettier neighborhood, but if one side's what we get, I'm probably okay with that too, so. That's really the only questions I had, I mean, I don't think we need to do any sidewalks and bicycle paths to the right public right of way. And there's not going to be right, I mean, there's not, that's, that's a main road there, we're not going, got to connect to something that's not there.
The roads and the ballmarks are unimproved, gravel.
Yeah.
Corey was giving me a nod about water, so I'm not talking about it. So, um, you guys know that they already have an availability for the ninety-nine for phase, uh, one A and one B. They do have a, on a, uh, timeframe, will serve twenty-twenty-seven for the other hundred and twenty. Um, I'm very comfortable with that based off of, um, the capital improvements that our, our liquid body has proven. And then our leak law survey for accounting water has been very, very well received and working through a lot of those, so, um, I have no reserves on availability on that schedule.
Okay.
Chris, is the schedule laid out in the document somewhere, or you talked about according to a letter of availability?
So they, they do have the, uh, one A, one B, they have that in possession today, it took, it was last minute, but I did get them the, uh, will serve by twenty-twenty-seven. Um, and Mr. King, um, Mr. Gerald has though.
And that's, that's agreeable, that makes the project go.
I think, I think that helps, yes.
It's our sewer, it's been the same, it's, it's available, um, when our new plan is online, so. Be able to be there for it, just how to get there is through your books.
And, and we've been working with them on that, to get that sorted out.
Thanks for the nod, Corey.
I hate to be the one to bring it up.
I'll make a motion, we approve this preliminary plat.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion carries, thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
I guess we just stay up here.
Hang out for us.
Give Will his chance.
All right, Greg Brooks?
Gerald Vic with WS Engineering, on behalf of Alan Blevins, has requested a twelve-month extension Sugar Creek Town Homes preliminary plat approved plans on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and construction drawings approved plans on December the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. The property is owned R3, high-density. And reason primarily for this is because our subregs state that preliminary plan, construction drawings have a one-year lot, basically, and they expire. So the applicant has the opportunity to bring a letter in to the planning commission, but it needs to be a month ahead of the expiration date for the planning commission to run in on extending the time for one year. There's no plans, uh, no changes to plans. Primary, the reason the city and the, and the owner have been in conversations about water line, where the water line should go. So, you know, the applicant it's not all his fault at all, meaning I'm trying not to lay blame on anybody, but it is a time-sensitive thing and, uh, we need to have a little more time to, uh, address issues.
So staff has no problem with the extension?
Absolutely not, really.
Y'all need to hear from Gerald, or do y'all want to?
I make a motion, we approve the extension.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
And I will note on that, you will see a development agreement on this development next month, so that's where we were. We've, um, gone back and forth with engineering and with the city's engineering and with the WS to, I think, come to an agreement, and then we're going to put that on a development agreement, which y'all will look at and then make recommendations for the season. That's where we are, we're very close.
It's time for general comments from citizens, nobody signed up for Gerald, so that, that didn't have business before us anyway, I don't know that Gerald even had to sign up because he had business with boards. Uh, board staff comments?
Not at this moment.
Uh, take a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion, Gerald.